Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Ms. Weathers, would you call the roll for us?
Ms. Heinz.
Here.
Mr. Henigan.
Here.
Mr. Darman.
Here.
Mr. Lu.
Here.
Mr. Harold.
Here.
Ms. Pippen's here. Mr. Jeter.
Here.
Ms. Seeling.
Here.
Ms. Muller. Mr. Beckenford.
Here.
Mr. Womack.
Here.
Mr. Paints. Mr. Lamar.
Here.
Mr. Alfred.
Here.
Ms. Fosserio.
Here.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alfred, would you please lead us in the invocation and pledge?
Dear Reverend Father, we ask you to bless each and every one of us that's here today, and we'd like to say thank you. Thank you for giving a special blessing to St. Tammany Parish Schools. And for our board members, give us the strength to conduct the business that comes before us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome you to our June 12th meeting. Summer is always a busy time of the school board office. People think it's not, but it is. It's quite a busy time, and I think you'll see that reflected in our meeting this evening. First item on our agenda is recognition of visitors. Board members, do you have anyone you'd like to recognize? If not, then we'll move on to item one, which is we have Mrs. Pat Brewster here to speak with us, St. Tammany Parish President. Ms. Brewster?
Good evening, and I love your punctuality. It's time to start, and you start. That's a lesson to be learned there. Well, thank you for allowing me just a few minutes to talk about something that I hope you've heard a lot about, and I hope you hear a lot more as we go forward, and that's our St. Tammany Parish Cultural Arts District. I want to share a little information to you because I think it has such an educational component, no matter how we do that entire area, we want to make sure that we have all the information that you want to bring forth to us, make sure we cover everything that our citizens are asking for in that area. So if you'll just give me a couple of minutes, I'll just go over a couple of things that have happened. The St. Tammany Parish Cultural Arts District encompasses 100 acres. It's a 100-acre site that includes 60,000 square feet of performing arts center, 20,000 square-foot children's museum, outdoor amphitheater, 10,000 linear feet of nature trails, and 75-acre nature preserve. This economic revitalization development is projected to produce over 100 new permanent jobs and several thousand construction jobs. The job creation for the project will coordinate with the proposed North Shore Center for Innovation and Learning, as North Shore Technical Community College has agreed to initiate programs that directly correlate to the need for this revitalization project. St. Tammany Parish is currently in Phase One of this project, consisting of infrastructure for the anticipated district and its proposed amenities. Funding for Phase One consists of donated property from private donor, approximately $10 million, and $5.167 million of CDBG-DR Hurricane Isaac funding from HUD. Phase Two consists of construction of two public buildings, the Children's Museum and Performing Arts Center. In addition to the required parking and anticipated outdoor features, funding for Phase Two is the current request of the Parish for state capital outlay funds in the amount of $35,866,000. And that would be for the construction of all of the other sites. The Children's Museum nonprofit contribution of $6 million includes the construction match of $1.25 million, in addition to $4.75 million in museum interior build-out. The combined local and federal funding of $31,133 million is 46% of the total projected cost, exceeding the required match of 25%. So that's already been met, that part. So I want to thank Superintendent Foles for participating in our task force. He has brought such great information to us and has been a part of that program since it began, and thank you for doing that. We have hired a consultant, AMS. They are well-known for their specialty is cultural arts district or performing arts centers, and they have been working now for several months, meeting with us and trying to help us determine what we need on that site, what size facilities we need, and what we want it as a community to look like. So one of the ways they did that was by survey, and I want to give you just a very few details of that, the results of that survey. The purpose, obviously, was to test current arts and cultural participation and awareness of regional performing arts assets, and interest in attending activities of the proposed venue. The survey method was online survey, developed by AMS, as they've done in other sites that they've been involved in, hosted on a sub-page of the St. Tammany Parish website. We marketed, the marketing included flyers at schools, social media posts, emails to nonprofits and area businesses with requests to distribute to employees, an email blast to the St. Tammany Parish database. We had hoped to get around 600 participants. We thought that would be a fantastic number. Well, we got a total of 704 survey responses were recorded. With that number, we have a margin of error of 3.68. So just a few highlights of what that survey brought to us. Respondents are most interested in attending musical theater, performances, non-musical stage plays, music fairs and festivals, jazz music concerts, and popular rock music concerts in St. Tammany Parish. However, less than half of all those respondents attended these individual activities anywhere in the past year, meaning to us that they don't want to travel, they want to see those here in this parish. Respondents are most interested in adult education in visual arts, acting, and traditional dance, and 25% have attended activities in visual arts, film, animation, computer graphics, and acting in the past year. Similarly, respondents indicated that they or someone in their immediate family are most interested in youth education in visual arts, acting, and musical theater, and about 25% have attended activities in these areas in the past year. 65% of respondents travel more than 30 miles to attend arts and cultural activities, and most frequently attend events and venues within New Orleans. The content featured performer or group and the date and time of an event have the greatest impact on a responder's decision to attend an arts or cultural event. On average, the theater, dance, music, film, and family-oriented program respondents expect to pay the same or less at a new performing arts venue in St. Tammany Parish than they've had to pay after traveling 30 or 60 miles to attend events. 95%, 95% of respondents at least somewhat support the development of a new performing arts center in St. Tammany Parish. I was especially thrilled to see that number. Of those, three-quarters report they would participate in arts and cultural activities more than they do now. Those who support the development of a new performing arts venue in St. Tammany believe the key benefits would include increased and more convenient access to professionally quality arts and cultures for the community, educational and cultural opportunities for families and children, improved quality of life to attract businesses and residents, increased consumer spending and job opportunities, economic growth by both attracting tourists and keeping local money in the parish. Those who stated they do not support the development, 5%, of a new performing arts center in St. Tammany Parish cited concerns regarding the proposed location within the parish, the required resources needed for building and maintaining the venue, or that they are already enough cultural facilities in the area. So those are just some highlights of the facility or of the cultural arts district. I did bring some information for your members to show you the site plan as we have it now. Certainly, it may change. But I want to stress that we could never have done even the start of this without the property that is being donated. All of this property is being donated to the parish, and it's right along a river. It's absolutely a beautiful site, and I feel so fortunate that we have someone that would step up and do that. So I thank you for letting me share some of the good information about that tonight, and I will always be available if anybody has any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming to bring that information to us.
Ms. Heinz, if I could, before Ms. Brewster leaves. You know, our last month's meeting, we talked about our community connections, and as I mentioned to board members that night, Ms. Brewster and the parish government were our first-ever community connection award winner, and I just wanted to thank her for allowing us to be at the table at everything that goes on in the parish, and it certainly has benefited the school system in many ways, and I appreciate her leadership and her willingness to involve us in things in parish. So thank you for that very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, special recognitions, board member service recognition. Mr. Javia.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. It's indeed a pleasure for me to recognize three of our board members tonight and present them with their service recognition pins. Mr. Clanton will assist me, but before he does, let me first thank all of you, and especially the three that's being recognized tonight, for your years of service and your dedication to our entire school community. We certainly appreciate it, and we enjoy the opportunity of working with each one of you. Our first recipient is Mr. Bob Womack, that will receive his 10-year pin tonight. Our president, Ms. Beth Heinz, with her 15-year pin tonight.
(laughing) Thank you so much, Ms. Heinz. Appreciate it.
And my good buddy who came into this school system when I did back in 1968, Mr. Willie Jeter, with his 40-year pin tonight. Again, thank all of you for your years of service, for your dedication, and for your professionalism in working with all of us and all of our entire school community. Thank you.
I have to tell one quick story, if I can. You know, Mr. Javia mentioned that him and Mr. Jeter started in 1968 in the school system. The other day, we surprised Mr. Javia with his pin, and I went back and Googled, like, what was going on in 1968? Stamps were five cents, a gallon of gas, I think, was 35 cents, but the one that blew us away the most was the Green Bay Packers won the Super Bowl. It was Super Bowl II.[796.12][796.12](Laughter) I mean, when you think back, it was II. Super Bowl II was around when Mr. Javia, as well as Mr. Jeter, started in our school system. So both of those guys have seen a lot, and we congratulate everyone for their pins.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Fols. I know I speak for all of the board members that we wear our pins with pride. Thank you. All right, next we have Channel 13 Broadcasting Internship Awards presentation, and I'll call in Mr. Fols for that.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Ms. Heinz and board members, tonight I'm pleased to once again introduce to you a group of award-winning Channel 13 Broadcasting interns. This year, they entered two different competitions. The first one was titled the Satellite Center Video and Animation Festival, and we have with us tonight a winner, Jake Ricker. Jake, come on up. Jake won first place in the sports and news category for his story on Math and Science Night at Sixth Ward Elementary School. Next up is John Hood. John, come on up. John won first place in the documentary category for his piece on Black History Month.[895.37][895.37](Applause) The students also won big at the St. Tammany Parish Commission Cultural Affairs Film Festival. Jake's Math and Science Night won again, so we have Jake come up again. You get a certificate this time around. Congratulations for that.[915.87][915.87](Applause) And then Jake's fellow intern, Rick O'Connell, won in the music video contest. Rick is out of town, couldn't be here tonight. Their winning video is named Signs on the Field, and it's really funny. I've seen it. It explains the hand signs made by football officials, and it's put to video music, and it's really funny, and it's good. And then we have the entire intern class won for best documentary, and this was Jake, as well as Maya Cantazera and Tori Eberhart. And this would not be possible without the leadership from our Channel 13 crew. John Harrison and Melody Swanger are both in the back, working back there, and we thank them for their efforts.[993.81][993.81](Applause) And I really appreciate, in the middle of summer, everyone coming out and receiving their plaques and certificates, and I want to tell everyone in the audience, as well as the board members, that all these videos are available for you to watch on our YouTube channel on the school system, and I hope you'll take the opportunity to take a look at them, and they're very well-done, and certainly high-quality, that we expect from students in our school system. We congratulate them for their efforts.[1017.66][1017.66](Applause)
Congratulations to all of you that won awards for Channel 13. I know you had a great experience interning there. All right, that brings us to public comments, five minutes. Ms. Melissa Pearson.
Good evening. I want to first thank you, board, for allowing me to the opportunity to come and speak tonight. My name is Melissa Pearson. I'm a new St. Tammany Parish resident, four years, and what drew me to St. Tammany Parish, actually, was the excellent schools. I didn't have to pay tuition, like in Orleans Parish, so moved the kids over here, opened a business, bought a house, all of this, right? So I'm here to talk to you tonight about the proposed fracking, hydraulic fracturing, happening close to Lake Shore High School, or proposed to happen close to Lake Shore High School. I know that this is not the sort of thing that you guys have any jurisdiction over. I appreciate what you do, you're good at what you do. I wouldn't want you to go out of your bounds at all, but there are some things that I'm hoping that are inside of your ability as policymakers for the school system, and some of those are just procedural in the event of an emergency, just some things to think about in advance, so when the stuff does start happening, none of us, concerned parents or faculty members or students, will be caught off-guard, if that makes sense. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. All right, so some of the things that come to my mind, in case anybody doesn't know, in case you've been out of the country or camping, and you don't know about fracking. Fracking is a mixture, what they do is they use a mixture of toxic waste, all of these crazy hazardous chemicals and water, and they blast it into the earth, and they destroy a horizontal layer of rock deep into the ground called shale. And what that does is, when the rock is destroyed, it releases oil and gas, and so then they harvest the oil and gas, and it's very profitable for the industry, and I understand, I drive a car. The issue, though, that arises is that they have all of this wastewater full of chemicals that they have to hold on to until they dispose of, and sometimes they truck it someplace else, sometimes they do something called an injection well, where they just put it right back in the ground. So that's something, our children are going to be exposed by air contamination to these crazy chemicals, which is a little disconcerting. Also, they have to drill through our water source. Everyone in St. Tammany Parish has the same water source, whether you're on well water or city water, so they have to drill through, and I'm not saying anything's going to happen, but in the event that something goes wrong there, then our well water, our drinking water, will be contaminated, and not just Lake Shore High School, even though that's the closest hotspot, but everyone, right? So in the event that these sorts of things happen, it just might be a good idea to have a protocol. I don't even know how to suggest or what to suggest, like, what do you do if the drinking water at Lake Shore High School is contaminated, you know? What do you do if there's so much methane being released into the air that the children are getting sick going to school? You know, these are just sorts of things. What about earthquakes? If that happens, do we have an earthquake procedure in South Louisiana? I mean, I know we have hurricane drills, I grew up with that, and fire drills, the stop, drop, and roll, but earthquakes, I mean, that's a whole different ballgame. And so that's going to take some assemblies at school, and parent education, and teacher education, you know? It just takes time, and it takes protocol. And then lastly, I know in my neighborhood, there have been a lot of talks about homeschooling as a result of this. I live in the Lake Shore District, so maybe, I was thinking, as an alternative to everybody freaking out and taking their kids out of Lake Shore, maybe there can be some sort of waiver program, like if a parent chooses not to have their child go to school near a fracking site, maybe we can bring them someplace else in the district, because the schools are so excellent. So that's about it. I thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming before us with your comments this evening. All right, we didn't have anyone sign up for three minutes. We'll move on to our agenda items. The first one is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on May 15, 2014. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
No.
I have a motion by Mr. Womack, a second by Ms. Seeling. Do we have any comments from the board? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Item B is appropriate retirement resolutions for the following certificated personnel subsequent to May 15, 2014. Glenda R. Davinson, Brock Elementary, 38.73 years, 19 years in St. Tammany Parish. Deanna K. Canton, Cypress Cove Elementary, 33.50 years, 25.50 years in St. Tammany Parish. Belinda B. Amato, North Shore High School, 33.56 years, 28 years in St. Tammany Parish. Rebecca O. Martin, North Shore High, 26.73 years, 22.73 years in St. Tammany Parish. Do I have a motion, please, to accept the retirement resolutions for these certificated personnel? I have a motion by Mr. Lu, a second by Mr. Jeter. Do we have any comments from the board? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Appropriate retirement resolutions for the following non-certificated personnel subsequent to May 15, 2014. Anthony L. Torgano, Bonnie Cole Elementary, 30.53 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Sharon D. Patterson, Covington Elementary, 27.06 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Teresa P. Colley, Mandeville Elementary, 21.56 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Charles F. Bennett, Transportation Center, 35 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Linda D. Creel, Transportation Center, 26.45 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Do I have a motion to accept the non-certificated personnel retirement resolutions? I have a motion by Mr. Beckencourt, a second by Mr. Alfred. Do we have any comments from the board? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Motion carried. Announcement of Assistant Principal of Abney Elementary School. Mr. Fols.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Tonight, I'm happy to introduce to you the new Assistant Principal at Abney Elementary, Mrs. Stephanie Jackson.[1508.02][1508.02](Applause)
Ms. Jackson, would you like to come forward?
Was that your baby crying in the audience earlier?[1521.37][1521.37](Laughter) Well, that's good. That's job security for all of us, though.[1525.52][1525.52](Laughter)
Abney Elementary.
There you go. Very good.
So I just want to take a moment and thank everyone. The quote, "The most powerful weapon, education's the most powerful weapon that you can use to change the world," by that quote by the former Nelson Mandela, is really the foundation of why I do what I do, and that's why I'm so honored and humbled to be a part and be accepting the position of Assistant Principal of Abney Elementary, because I can continue to live out that legacy and instill that into the children, those little Spartans. So I'd like to thank the board, Mr. Fols, Ms. Araby, Mr. Javia, and Mr. Alfred for giving me that opportunity, and I am very, very excited to begin working with the St. Tammany Parish Board, the leadership team at Abney, the parents, the community, and most importantly, those very precious little babies there, as we continue to strive for excellence. So once again, thank you.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Lamar has a presentation for you.
Well, welcome to St. Tammany Parish Schools, and Abney Elementary in particular. We're looking forward to you doing great things. There's some late reading for you when you have time.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.[1599.37][1599.37](Applause)
All right, announcement of Assistant Principal of Lancaster Elementary School.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Tonight, I'm happy to introduce to you a familiar face, the new Assistant Principal at Lancaster Elementary, Mrs. Sarah Revere.
I can't ad lib like she did, because I'm a little nervous. Superintendent Foles, Assistant Superintendents, Ms. Araby, Mr. Javia, Board President, Ms. Heinz, and members of the board, thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve as Assistant Principal at Lancaster Elementary. Because my career path has crossed that of many exceptional leaders and mentors, I feel strongly that I am armed with the skills to be successful as an assistant in leading Lancaster. I am thrilled to have the opportunity to begin my journey as a Lancaster sea turtle. Thank you for that opportunity, and thanks to my family for the constant support.[1670.12][1670.12](Applause)
I'm going to sit with my little girl, and I'm very proud of you this evening. I was proud of you being at Folsom, but I'm proud that you're moving into District Two, which is my district. It's a little summary for you.
Thank you.
Sarah, I'd like to say, Sarah, I'd like to say thank you for the years you gave us at Folsom Junior High. I really appreciate you did a great job there for us. Thank you.
All right, now we have the announcement of parish-wide assistant principals. Mr. Fols.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. We have four tonight. We'll do them one at a time, if that's okay. First one that we're happy to introduce to you in the parish-wide assistant principal program is Mrs. Kay Burns.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Mr. Fols, Ms. Araby, and Mr. Javia, and the board for this opportunity to continue to serve St. Tammany Parish, just in a new capacity. I actually went to St. Tammany Parish Public Schools, K through 12, as do my children now, go to St. Tammany Parish Public Schools, and I can say with certainty that they are second to none in their educational opportunities. I'd also like to thank Mrs. Welch, my principal, and many leaders that I have followed, excuse me, that I have followed, I'm a little nervous too, for being mentors and inspiring me to want to go down this path. They are truly remarkable leaders, and I appreciate what they've done for me. And finally, I'd like to thank my family, my husband and my three girls, my parents and my friends, for all their support and love.
Let me get over here.
Let me get over here, see if I can... Just like everyone else, we want to congratulate you on your promotion to parish-wide administrator. This is a great program. It does great jobs for our school system because it prepares our future principals. So we're so happy that you've been selected to be one of our parish-wide principals. And when you've got spare time, you can read this book. And I know you're gonna have a report done for us next.
Oh, absolutely.
Congratulations, you.
The second parish-wide assistant principal is Ms. Charmaine Donald.
Again, my name is Charmaine Donald. First, I would like to thank God for blessing me with this opportunity. Mr. Foles, Ms. Araby, the entire leadership team and school board members, thank you for this opportunity. To my family, thank you for your love and your support. To my Salman Spartan family, thank you for supporting and encouraging me. And to others who have given me words of encouragement as I travel this journey, I thank you. It is an honor and a privilege to be able to educate, motivate, and inspire students at this level. And I am very excited and looking forward to another great school year. And I will continue to promote the district's overall mission of educating every child every day. Thank you.
Good job.
Mr. Alfred has a presentation.
I'm going to go ahead for the St. Tammany Parish School Board. Charmaine, we would like to congratulate you for becoming a parish-wide assistant principal. Just like Mike said, this is a very good program and helps you to train to become one of our principals at one of the schools that'll be selected. And I know you're gonna do a good job. And we have a book for you to read.
Okay.
Schools cannot do it alone. So in your spare time...
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Our third parish-wide assistant principal tonight is Ms. Melissa Stradaburger.
I'd like to thank the board, Superintendent Foles, Mr. Javia, and Ms. Araby for this great honor and opportunity. I would also like to thank Mr. Patrano, the principal of Fountain Blue High School, for his mentorship, friendship, and support. It has been a privilege to be under the tutelage of such a great and effective educational leader. I would also like to thank the entire faculty and staff of Fountain Blue High School for their collaboration and commitment to educational excellence. It was an honor to be part of and learn from such a remarkable and distinguished group of educators. I would also like to thank my parents, Linda and Walter Strata, from whom I learned a strong work ethic, value of education, integrity, and the concept of unconditional love and support. Finally, I'd like to thank my husband, Brian, and my sons Peyton and Brennan for supporting and inspiring me every day. I am honored to be chosen as an educational leader in St. Tammany Parish and commit to you to do my absolute best to educate every child every day. I'm very excited for this opportunity and to work with these four great young ladies and very impressive women. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Ms. Stradaburger, Ms. Tipton, Ms. Stradaburger, Ms. Tipton has a presentation.
I'm so happy for you. Congratulations from the board. We know that you're gonna do a wonderful job and be such an asset. And I know Fountain Blue is gonna miss you tremendously because you've just been terrific there.
Well, thank you.
Wish you the best.
Thank you.
Here's your reading.
Oh, great. Thanks.
Ms. Heinz, our fourth presentation tonight and appointment is Ms. Kristen Winget.
Thank you, Mr. Foles, Ms. Araby, Mr. Javia, President Heinz, and members of the board. Thank you so much for this opportunity to serve children in this administrative role in St. Tammany Parish. I believe very strongly in public education. I graduated from, my husband and I both graduated from public school in St. Charles Parish. We got here as quick as we could, but my children have graduated...
Let me rethink this this evening.
My children graduated from St. Tammany Parish.
All right.
There we go. Public schools. My mom and dad graduated from public school. My grandpa and grandma, my brother, my sister-in-law, everybody has gone to public school. It's part of our culture, I guess, and our family. And it's something I feel very strongly and protective of. I want to say thank you to my family and friends at Mandeville Elementary, where I've spent the last 17 years. And when I began teaching there 17 years ago, I met a special teacher that was to become a big influence in my life. I tried to model my professional decisions after what I saw, her model. And thank you, Ms. Lane, for instilling in me a sense of service in working with kids and a privilege of being able to teach them each day. I appreciate that every day. And so lastly, thank you to my family, my husband Mitch and my kids. And I'm very, very excited to use everything I've learned to start this new chapter of my career. Thank you so much.
Ms. Winget, Ms. Winget, come back. Mr. Womack has your homework.
Without getting this book.
I told myself I was gonna...
Okay, you've got some reading to do. But each time, seriously, that Ms. Heinz gives me the grand job of congratulating you all and as being part of something that is grand. And you are blessed and it is a grand job to be part of something great, is it not?
It is.
So this book is proof positive that schools cannot do it without Kristen Winget.
Thank you so much.
Enjoy it.
Thank you so much.
Now, Mr. Foles, that these four have accepted this job as parish-wide assistant principal, and it's a tough job, would you just give the public just a little information about what that position is?
Sure. It's a program that's been in place for a few years and we were able to fully fund it this year, thanks to this board, as well as add a couple additional positions. And it allows these people to take one nine weeks at each of our four schools and rotate around and learn from and work with different administrators from across the parish. We'll try to place them in positions that will benefit them the most in their learning process and will also be of the most benefit to the school system. We had 60 applicants for this program. We actually interviewed 30 people for the job. So these four that you see here tonight are the best of the best and we're very encouraged and very exciting. We all spoke when we finished the interviews of what an exciting time it was to have so many wonderful candidates and so many people that want to take on these leadership roles in the parish. And these four, as well as the two that were appointed as assistant principals, are ones that we're all certainly proud of and look forward to seeing them grow as administrators in our school system.
Thank you. I appreciate that explanation. All right, we'll move on to item G, which is approval of the recommendations from the committee as a whole meeting for human resources and education, held on June 5, 2014. Ms. Bellisario, would you give that report this evening?
Thank you, Mrs. Heinz. The committee would like to recommend the approval of the federal programs, United Unified Application, NCLB, IDEA.
All right, do I have a motion to accept that? Second. We have a motion from Mr. Alfred, a second from Ms. Sealy. Do we have any comments from board members? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? So ordered.
The committee would also like to recommend approval of the revisions to the 2013-2014 pupil progression plan.
I have a motion by Mr. Jeter, a second by Mr. Loop. Do we have any comments from board members? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? So ordered.
And the committee also recommends approval of the revisions to the 2014-2015 pupil progression plan.
A motion by Mr. Betancourt, a second by Mr. Durman. Do we have any comments from the board? I'd like to thank Ms. Parker and Ms. Araby for sitting down with some of us and explaining some of those changes. We appreciated that. Any other comments? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? So ordered.
I think that's all that we have to report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bellisario. Approval of the recommendations from the committee as a whole meeting for business affairs and administrative, held on June 5, 2014. Mr. Durman.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. We have the following recommendation. Recommends acceptance of low base bid submitted by Polamar Modular Building LLC in the amount of $611,568 for the modulars at Covenant High School, STP SB Project Number 1473. An ISO move.
We have a motion by Mr. Durman, a second by Mr. Loop. Do we have any comments from board members? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? So ordered. Mr. Durman?
Second recommendation, recommends acceptance of the employee salary schedules for fiscal year 2014-2015.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrell, a second by, was that you, Mr. Jeter? All right. Do we, thank you. Do we have any comments from board members? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? So ordered.
Ms. Heinz, that completes our report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item I is certification of board members Neil M. Henigan, Michael J. Durman, Stephen J. Jack Loop III, Charles C. Harrell, Rowan B. Tipton, Willie B. Jeter, Peggy H. Sealy, Robin P. Mullitt, Ronald Ron Betancourt, Robert R. Bob Womack, James Ronnie Pitts Sr., Ray Alfred, Mary K. Bellisario, in completion of one hour of training for 2014, presented on June 5, 2014, as mandated by Louisiana Revised Statute 17:53. Mr. Lamarck, I'm sorry.
You did it last one.
No, I did that.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. I indeed certify that these board members did complete the training as mandated and are eligible for the credits as shown as according to Louisiana Revised Statutes.
Thank you, Mr. Foles. Appreciate that. All right, this evening, you might have noticed that we have this beautiful piece of art in front of us. And we'd like to ask Mr. Alfred if he'd come up and tell us a little bit about it. It's from the Abney family.
Put you on the spot.
This is a project that our school did about a month ago or so. Mr. Foles and Ms. Araby came for a visit to read to some of our students and he was admiring something very similar to this at our school that our art department had done for Abney. And I heard him remark to Ms. Araby how much he liked it and gave me a little idea. And I pass this on to my art teacher, Mrs. Reed Sertz, who just took it from there. She got her students involved. She spent the last two weeks of school refocusing her lesson plan to focus on this particular art project and did it. And I'm very, very proud of it. It's an exceptional piece of job. And it's all beads. It's all Mardi Gras beads.
Beautiful.
Yeah, so, very nice.
Thank you so much. It is beautiful and we're proud to have a home for it here in the school board central office. Mr. Foles?
We will now do a worker's comp file for Mr. Javia for throwing out his bag.
But after the meeting, you're welcome to come up and take a look at it. Get a better look at it. All right, now, Mr. Foles, I believe you have a video for us.
We do have a video, a graduation video. You know, we wanted to share that with you. We talked about last month what a great eight graduations in eight days that it was. So this video captures a little bit of that great week in our school system. So take a look.
You know, that is my favorite video of the year because the graduation week is a very hectic week. But to see over 2,000 excited and happy teenage groups or graduates of our school system, and then there's all of their family members and their teachers who care so much about them, it's a very joyful week. And we really enjoy that video every year. Great wrap-up to graduation week. Thank you all for the jobs you do in our schools. We appreciate it very much. Now we have a few announcements. A special board meeting for the purpose of superintendent's performance review will follow tonight's meeting. The meeting will be held in executive session. A special board meeting will be held on Thursday, June 19, at 6:00 p.m. Agenda items include interviews for the position of supervisor of instruction, consideration of renewal of insurance policies for 2014-15, and an executive session. And that's all of the agenda items we have for this evening. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for coming.